Good evening, and welcome to the McKinnon Council Chambers for tonight's public hearing on the fiscal 2023 town budget. First order of business is the five-year capital plan. Mr. Manager?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what I wanted to do was just give a brief shortened version of the budget presentation. This is what I did last year, and perhaps talk about it all together. I had an introduction for the FY 2023 budget, and we could talk about the capital plan within that framework in the presentation.
Certainly. Any objections? No. Very good.
I'll take the podium from there.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, council members, residents, and guests this evening, in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, the Town and Southbridge Home Rule Charter, I am pleased this evening to re-present the FY 2023 budget as well as our capital budget presentation for your consideration. I just wanted to let you know that during the preparation of our operating capital budgets, the finance team, which consists of Ms. Karen Harnoyes, our Finance Director, Sharon Ashley, our Treasurer, Rachel Carney, our new Assessor, we met regularly to put together a stable, consistent budget with moderate increases adhering to the Town Council policies currently in existence. The operating budget that we presented and brought to the Subcommittee was in the amount of $64 million or $64.4 million, and we have capital expenditures roughly $8 million, $1.9 that we would be asking to be funded out of free cash. This is our second budget together, and I want to recognize all of our employees that have worked again through another year of COVID, their hard work and efforts during this time period, and the contributions of all of our department heads as we put together this budget. We are still dealing with effects of the Omicron variant, and we've suffered from the great resignation. As many of you know, we've had significant turnover here at Town Hall. It's had impacts on individuals' lives, our staff's lives, and we continue to deal with these changes and disruptions and the lasting effects, as well as what we've now begin to see macroeconomic influences as well as geopolitical influences that are affecting us right here in our budgets, including in our energy costs and our ability to get supplies for some of the projects that we're working. Due to this economic uncertainty, again, I had asked all budgets to be praired in a level service format. That means I asked everybody to provide the same level of services that they had in the past and not to ask for any additional increases for personnel or for extra expenditures, after which we did look to supplement the budget with some of the requested positions that I gleaned from the council over the last year, so that we would not have any new budgetary increases, positions, or service expansions, except for those that are absolutely needed and the ones that I believe I heard from the council were needed for the community to address council priorities and community needs. After which, I continued to meet with our finance team. We met with each department head, went line by line, reviewed capital budgets, and we put forward the budget that is before you this evening for the public hearing. As I indicated, this is a budget that's been put together on existing financial policy directives, prudent fiscal management, which includes a principle that one-time revenues should only be used for one-time expenditures and sustainable budget practices. We rely on projections of available revenue within the town's financial resources. The budget is based upon the established ceiling of revenue that can be derived from reasonable property taxes under the provisions of Proposition 2.5, as well as revenues that come in from state aid, excise fees, permits, interest available in other grant monies, including the ARPA money that has been available in the last year. I do want to thank again all of my employees that have participated in this, as I said, our finance team, Ms. Harnoyes, Ms. Ashley. I also wanted to recognize our new Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, Ms. Adriana Ravena. She's been actively involved in all of this. And again, thank the council for their cooperation, all those folks who've put input into this, including Dr. Villar and Mr. Racine and the rest of his team. And I also want to thank my staff, Ms. Nora Elgadiri, who helps put a lot of this together, Gail Reduka, and Amy Stanton. As we previously discussed, the budget priorities this year, based on all of my meetings and what I've gleaned from the council, are education, public safety, which included our fire, police, DPW, looking at capital infrastructure with oversight, based on what I heard from the council, our network security in the form of replacing or supplementing the position when Mr. Conoyer, who was our Assessor, who also wore the hat of IT Director here, and health and human services, which addressed our HR components. Some of the budget highlights, as you know, were our new human resources department. We had a restructuring in our cable department. We had to accommodate some of these macroeconomic influences, including increases in our motor vehicle fuel, lubricants, and oil budgets, the new ID Director that we need because we don't have that position at the moment. We had to put in some tuition monies into our personnel budget. Police budget has 39 positions, as you know, public safety is an issue here in town. The fire budget includes four safer positions funded for half a year at 100%. The DPW budget includes a new maintenance position, and although I meant to change this, we're looking at putting an assistant to the town engineer to help with oversight in stormwater. The Recreation Director is being increased to full-time. Southbridge Public Schools is funded in three categories from state aid, tax levies, which are general operating capital and a master facilities study. I would also like to thank Dr. Villar for the last one, the health insurance budget at 70/30 split, with the Southbridge providing the monies to the town, and as you know, the council already voted on that. And I think that really helps us in our ability to recruit and retain excellent employees here in Southbridge, and it also recognizes the tremendous job that our employees did over the last two years dealing with COVID. Just as an overview, this is a projection showing you where we have been in the last two fiscal years in the projected budget. Our budget has increased in the last two years from $58 million to 60.3 and to 64.4 this year. That's an increase of 6.8. One of the biggest differences is the amount of state aid that we got this year. Most of it went to the schools, which is why you see the big increase there in the schools, as well as our charges and assessments. This is a current allocation of the town's budget. Approximately one-half goes to Southbridge Public Schools, and then the rest of it is divvied up amongst our monies for the vocational school at Bay Path, benefits insurance, debt service, and then our larger departments, our Public Works, Police, and Fire. We have our General Government and Services, which makes up the rest of our departments, our state assessments and overlay, which is a large amount of money that we often have to pay back to the state, which includes school choice, and our retirement obligations. As you know, we have to put money aside for pension, as well as OPEB in our library. The capital budget is previously mentioned. We are looking to use to fund from property taxes, free cash, and overlay approximately $1.9 million, about $300,000 from state and federal grants. The water and sewer bonding will make up about $8 million of the funds necessary, as well as retained earnings of $1 million. Other special revenue accounts will be used. And then lastly, there had been a request for ARPA monies, which may still be on the table, and then, under our new capital budget format, we have several sources that were, we called multiple funding sources, which were primarily a combination of grants, Chapter 90 monies, and bonds. We have a capital budget this year which looks different from the last year's, and I may have accidentally deleted the slide for the format, but we had a capital budget ad hoc committee that we were working with Councilman Marquetti, and we looked at other formats, and this year we tried to group it into something that, although the font is a little small, can fit on one page to give individuals the ability to see all the departments going up and down in the matrix, as well as going out the five years that we talked about. It was a format that we discussed at the meetings and seemed to be one that would work. I understand we had to make some changes after we went to GenGov. We'll continue to work on this format, but we're hoping to make something that is usable going forward, and appreciate any feedback from the council or the budget as we go along. The budget as presented, this is the impact on the average single-family tax bill. It breaks down right along the lines with the various departments. As we said, about 48% of the average $4,266 tax bill, about 48% of that will go towards the schools, and the breakdown will be similar to the departments I showed you before, with the larger departments such as Police and Fire getting roughly Police seven, Fire four, and DPW three. Again, some of the larger portions of your tax bill go to fund General Government, our state assessments, and retirement. Again, we tried to keep numbers relatively stable within Town Hall. We haven't increased employees. We have some positions open, Dr. Villar to accommodate the, and I won't speak for the entirety, but because of COVID, he had to bring in extra people in the last two years, so his numbers have increased slightly. Our primary sources of funding, again, tax revenue makes up $24.8 million, which is approximately 40% of the budget. State aid makes up the bulk of the rest at $31.47 million. We also have local receipts, which have bounced back since the height of the pandemic, and available funds. This is a further breakdown of the revenues over the last two years. As I indicated, we did see an increase. You can see as you get down to the cherry sheet, which is the Governor's proposal, we had a significant increase in our Chapter 70 monies, as well as our unrestricted general government aid, which is abbreviated as UGGA. Our tax base remains strong, and our state aid and our other revenues and our local receipts have again been strong this year, so it allows us to continue to fund the level services and to add the positions that the council has indicated they see a need for. Again, the breakdown in the revenues hasn't changed much over the last five years. The bulk of our money still comes from state aid. Local receipts, as I said, is down a little bit, but that can be related to macroeconomic issues as well as COVID, but we are on the rebound over last year. When you break down the revenues, you can see how they came. Residential property tax increased over the last couple of years. The growth rate was approximately 4.4%. That is the fastest-growing sector. We're still bringing in some monies. You can see in the columns under hotel tax that we did bounce back from 2020 into fiscal 21, so we are recovering a lot of the local receipts. So that tells me that going forward, we should be in good shape in the coming years, provided we don't have another serious outbreak of COVID, which requires some type of lockdown. But I think we've come to realize how to manage and live with it at this point in time, so I don't foresee such drastic measures as we did in 2020. The revenue trends, as I've indicated previously, we tend to lean a little heavier on our total revenues from our local taxes, but our state aid, although we still get increases, it doesn't make up the percentage of the revenue that it once did approximately 15 or 20 years ago. And the bottom is a bar chart that just shows you where we're getting our local receipts. The bulk of it does come from our motor vehicle and excise taxes. We get some hotel meal taxes, and again, we're starting to see those grow back to where they once were. In terms of state aid, you can see the money has increased year over year in that first column in Chapter 70. We did receive additional funds this year, but the growth rate is not as high as when you look at what our growth rate has been for reliance on our local taxes and receipts. However, the positive trend is that we keep getting additional funding each year, and we're not receiving less. Again, state aid has been slightly on the rise, but as a percentage of total revenue, it has not kept pace, and we've had to rely slightly more on our local real estate taxes in the last couple of years. Our expenses, the biggest change, as you can see, is our charter school assessments. As I said, we have assessments this year of roughly $4 million. The breakdown really comes from the charter school assessments, school choice, and other charges. That is the bulk of the increases for expenses. Otherwise, we're dealing, as I said, with the level service budget there. The breakdown does not a significant change year over year in the last six years. Education stayed roughly the same. Our fixed costs have stayed roughly the same. General Government, not so much. So pretty much consistent across the board where we're spending our money percentage-wise. Major expenses, as you can see, the various departments, General Government, Police, Fire, Public Safety, Education, Public Works. The bottom of the growth rates, we've had to increase Public Safety and Fire and Police. Education has grown, however, Public Works and Human Services has taken a bit of a hit as they have not grown as fast as the other departments. However, with ARPA monies here and looking at what we're doing with our health insurance that should address some of the issues here, however, we do have some positions that we've talked about for oversight, which would help address some of the needs in Public Works. Our total expenditures have been increasing year over year, and that is often due to fixed versus nondiscretionary expenditures. I think the bottom is missing, but our nondiscretionary expenditures tend to be our OPEB, excuse me, not our OPEB, our pension liability, which we're required to pay into some of our contractual obligations, as well as our bond and debt. So those have increased somewhat, but we are managing our debt, but we are not in control necessarily of the annual amounts that we have to pay into the state pension fund that's set. There's an actuarial that's done every two years, and we're reassessed so that we can be fully funded by 2035. So those are areas that have continued to grow, and we're not at liberty to cut from those areas if we had to make budget cuts, but that is part of the reason that our budget goes up year over year. Our tax levy, again, we've, because of COVID, a lot of the real estate prices went up in the last couple of years, which, based on the valuations of our property, has expanded our tax levy, and we have excess levy capacity and the ability to have an override if we ever needed. Right now, our excess levy capacity is just under $1 million at $966,000. And the breakdown of our tax levy, again, the bulk of it over the last five years hasn't changed significantly, but we've increased 2%. We're taking 78% of our tax levy is from residential, and then you can see we have a commercial that's gone down slightly, as well as we have industrial and personal property. And as you know, we're trying to work with, through Ms. Dean and the efforts in our office to try and attract additional businesses into Southbridge, hoping that we can divert some of the burden from the residential tax levy to the commercial industrial base. Breakdown of the tax levy, how it's grown in the last eight, nine years, the growth rate is roughly 5.1%. Excuse me, the total assessed value is, and the tax levy has grown approximately 3.9% during that time period. Here's where our tax bill stands. The average tax bill in 2022, the average single-family home in Southbridge is at $238,000, with our tax rate at $17.9. Gives us a single-family tax bill of $4,266. Our state rank out of the 351 cities and towns is at 275, so it's increased a little bit over the last couple of years, but it was higher back in 2017. The five-year increase, it's gone up $691, with a growth rate of 3.76%. And, Mr. Chairman, that is just an overview. It's a condensed version of the budget presentation that we gave earlier in March, and I'm happy to answer any questions from you or the public. In this being a public hearing, I'm happy to address any issues.
Is there anyone, excuse me, is there anyone from the public that would like to approach and ask questions on the budget? Anyone from the public? Very well, I open up to council. If council has any comments they'd like to make. Councilor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, through you. First of all, the bottom line on this year's budget is a 6.82% increase, correct?
That's what my math show is correct.
And, but you're considering that a level service budget, so are you saying that we're getting the same service, but it's costing us more?
So, if I may, through you, when I sent out my budget letter to the department heads on the town side, that I asked them to present me with a departmental-level budget, each one of them, for level services, to provide the same services and add nothing to that. Now, part of the increase in the budget, as I did say, was we did get additional monies from the state that did allow us to provide more for the schools in this past year. That's part of it. So we did put in, after we did a level service, and I got that from every one of my departments, I then, as I put in the highlights, did put in to the budget various positions that I believed that the Town Council that I interpreted wanted to see added. So that would be the oversight positions in DPW. I did have a request from the Police Department based on what we're seeing in town post-COVID, public safety issues, and then I, so there was a position added there for consideration, as well as we put in for additional firefighters for the last several years for the SAFER Grant, only to be put aside, and there appears to be a need for firefighters as well. So, yes, at the base, there was a level service budget, but we do have, through the additional monies that were brought in through Chapter 70 for the schools, as well as the increases on the positions that I think the town needs, did get us to that number.
Okay, thank you. Reading over your summary to the budget, which is online, by the way, if anybody wants to read it, there's a common theme running out through the whole thing that you're filling positions left vacant due to the COVID. And I don't recall us losing a lot of employees due to COVID. I know we've had some people leave. We've had some retirements. We had, I think it was the Treasurer that wanted to move closer to home. She had a job offer. DPW directors leaving. We've had some turnover, but I don't recall them all being due to the COVID.
Again, Mr. Chairman, through you, I would say COVID-related, and with that, you could say great resignation, and now what they're calling a great reshuffling. We've had more than a 50% turnover since the start of the pandemic here. We had people that did not want to be here because of health reasons. We had people whose families chose to reevaluate where they live, where other family are. We did have quite a few people go, a handful, and you do have normal turnover. We haven't filled some of the positions. We haven't filled the IT position. I believe we still have one or two DPW positions that we haven't filled. We have the new ones that we're looking at, and if you talk to the Chief of Police, we always have vacancies there, and I know we're trying, and we've had difficulty recruiting people. So we have, throughout the year, been challenged trying to find those, and as you said, we have some people now that have decided to go elsewhere.
And the bottom line on the tax levy is, maybe you could settle that for me. I see a couple of different numbers here. One's 3.54%, one is 3.31%. So the tax levy increase is, is it 3.1 or 3.31 or 3.54?
Are you referring to what I had in the slides? Or, the 3.9 is the five-year growth rate. I'm not sure if I have a slide. If you, are you asking me year over year? This particular slide shows you the growth rate over the last eight years. So it's a formula, it doesn't show you year to year, but it takes the average of the increases and manipulates it such that it gives you an indication of what the growth rate was over the eight years. So that's why that number may be different. Not sure if I have a slide speaking.
So this year's tax levy, I see on page three, three points, not on your slide, but on page three of your presentation, which is online, it's 3.31% tax revenue. And then on page five, it's tax levy base, 3.54%. And I'm just trying to, you know, I just would like to know which one is it? This year's tax levy increase will be, what is the bottom line?
So on this particular slide, if you look at 2021, 2022, that last year, our tax levy was $24,006,000. So I would have to go back in time. I'm not sure if I have one right off. If I don't have it up here, I'm going to have to go to my desk there and look for it, Mr. Marquetti. $24,800,000 is what I have on this particular slide. It was projected, so from fiscal 2022 to fiscal 2023, there's approximately an $800,000 difference, and I have a 3.31% change there. And I've seen Ms. Harnoyes nodding her head, so.
That's correct, all right. And, a couple other, I just have a couple other questions. And also in your summary, you talk about a sustainable budgeting practice. So what do you mean by that, sustainable budget practice?
Well, we try, the first rule of sustainable budget practice is not to rely on one-time monies, so we wouldn't try and use ARPA funds in our budget. Sustainable budget practices would be to sit down and look at trends, as I've used in the overall budget presentation, financial trend monitoring, to look at the trends over the years, but to ensure that you're making adequate budget revenue, or, excuse me, revenues projections, so that when you're putting together a budget, you, year over year, you believe that you can sustain that level of services based on what you've seen in past as trends and what you predict going forward. If we saw a continuation of a decline in our local receipts, and we didn't see any light on the horizon with regard to OPEB, excuse me, COVID, or any of these macroeconomic issues, we may have had to make different projections so that we could sustain the budget in the next following year. So can I give you a bright-line rule as to what is a sustainable practice? No, but what I have learned over the years is not to rely on the one-time monies, to make as accurate predictions as you can based on past trends, so that as you build a budget, you don't run deficits in the future.
And also pension liability would be part of sustainable budget practice, making sure we're up to date on our pension liability.
We are required to make contributions based on the every-two-year actuarial assessment of where we stand. We need to be fully funded in our trust fund by 2035, and every two years, they reevaluate and give us any corrections that they see necessary, and we've been making contributions. Off the top of my head, I think it's roughly $5 million that comes from the town. There's also payroll that's contributed as well as the last year or so. We've been fortunate, up until recently, with the stock market, the returns have helped that grow, which should ultimately allow us to become 100% funded. OPEB is slightly different. We will be coming in the coming weeks to talk about making contributions to OPEB as well. That's other post-employment benefits, which is typically health insurance for retirees. There is no set requirement by the state as to how much you should put in, but to be prudent, we would like to make a reasonable contribution every year to help us fund that, and it also reflects well on the town's efforts to go out and do borrowing, and the rating agencies tend to look at your contributions in all of these areas when they make a ranking for the town. And you always want to be making these contributions and managing your debt so that you can continue to have a favorable rating, which will allow us to get favorable rates.
And you're putting $500,000 in this year. Do you think that's enough?
Well, we're looking at all sources of revenue and what all of our needs are. I believe that's more that will be put in last year. I don't have it off the top of my head, but we have quite a ways to go for OPEB in light of some of the projects and other needs. Speaking with Ms. Harnoyes, I think it's Speaking with Ms. Harnoy's, I think it's sufficient for, for the moment. We could put more in if the council's so inclined, but again, we want to balance our approach to where we're distributing the monies, but also be mindful of the rating agencies to ensure that we do get a proper review and a favorable rating from them. And we do think by continuing to put those monies aside for stabilization in OPEB, that should help us.
And that, but that would help our credit rating, correct? That would help our credit rating.
It should, yes.
And also, you don't want to deplete your reserves. You don't want to deplete your reserves.
Correct.
Correct. Are we depleting our reserves?
We, as far as I know, we've been maintaining a healthy stabilization balance in, I don't have the number committed to memory, Ms. Harnoy's could probably tell me, but it's been in excess of $4 million for the last two or three years, I believe. She might have it or know it closer to me. What, do you have an approximation of what our stabilization balance is? It's around $4.5 million, roughly?
$4.8.
$4.8 million.
Okay. You also, in your summary, you talk about looking ahead, enhancing communication through quality publications. Is there a chance we're going to get our budget in some kind of a town report, so the residents can see it, understand it, and distribute it?
Yes.
Maybe in the Town Hall, like other communities?
We actually have, we did a fiscal year, the last year's town report. Had it done. I could put it out. I was trying to put a summary of some of the projects that we've done, but if you, council so inclined, I'll give you the, the version that we have to date. I can have that sent out this week and put on the website. That, that recaps, actually, the end of fiscal 2022. But nevertheless, we will be finishing up fiscal 2022. We'll get that one done as well, so, yes.
And finally, we don't want to lose sight that we do have a fire station coming up.
Yes.
And so where do we stand with that?
Well, we have been continuing to make progress. We are working through the land acquisition phase right now, as I'm sure, well, I take that back. Not everybody would know that, as a public entity, we're required to go through public procurement process. We can't just go out and buy property like other people do. The other interesting fact that Southbridge has, unlike other communities, is land here is at a premium. We don't own the land when we went out looking to build the fire station. So we have to do a public process to go out and evaluate the sites and speak with the landowners, and that's something that the fire station building and I, as well as our owner's project manager, who we had to procure because of the size of the project, they're essentially our clerk of the works. We've been working with them to go through the proper procedure to ensure that we can work with the landowners, as well as make sure that the property we're buying is in the best interest of the community.
And we're still within the budget?
As far as I know, we haven't, we haven't reached the point where we've spent any money on the project. We have a project architect, and at some point, when we're done with all of the, the process that we're doing right now on the fire station, we'll be entering negotiations with these property owners, and then, then we would go out and hire a construction company, and we would then start from there. So I can't really forecast what will happen with supply chain issues, or whether any construction may go up or down, but, you know, with a recession, you don't know. People might be competitive, so we're, we're a ways off from that stage, so there could be variables that drive the price up or down. We don't know at this point in time.
So are you planning on borrowing the money this year, or is that something that you haven't?
No, what we've talked about doing was borrowing money at, at this stage to cover the, the costs that we've incurred so far, and probably to do the land acquisition, but we won't get to the point of borrowing until we get to the stage where we've broken ground and looking to bring, so at this point in time, we would not be borrowing the full amount of the $25 million.
All right, thank you. I'm all set. Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Jovan.
Thank you, through you. Just a couple of quick questions. First off, as we know, that the state budget is going through hearings, and the state's going to debate the budget, and there's talk on unrestricted aid being increased from the Senate side at least, and I know these numbers were all predicated on the governor's House one, correct?
Yes.
So what impact would it have on, say, the tax levy capacity if the state were to give us more unrestricted state aid? Would that just reduce, would we, would we look to reduce our tax levy, or the taxes on the town, not necessarily spend those, and come back to the council for additional positions and, and not?
That, that would be one way. If we wound up having additional revenues that came from the state, then we would not need to go for those monies. And what would likely happen, we, we could do one of two things. We, next year, when you set your tax rate, you could adjust the tax rate at that time to incorporate any savings, and you could lower the rate, or you could keep the rate as is, and if anything comes back at the end of the year, be certified as free cash, and you could use that to, for your capital budget or other, so you have the, those options.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, your budget has gone through all of the various subcommittees for vetting, and there was feedback brought to, to, to you, and I believe everything was reported back favorably to, to, to come to council. Is that not correct? Or whatever, and Pat, I'm just looking to see.
Through you, Councilor Chairman, through you to Councilor Jovan. There was healthy discussion at all the subcommittees. I think there are some subcommittee chairs that may have some comments on their relevant portion of the budget. I, I don't recall anything not being recommended up to council, but I do think there may be some changes. We talked about some of the various positions. There may be some slight changes to the positions and the wording thereof, and maybe a couple of items may have changed on the capital, because rather than ARPA monies, we may be looking at bonding them, but no major change that I can recall.
All right, and I'll look forward to that discussion when we get to the actual item on the council agenda that we can debate at that time. I just wanted to ask, in this public hearing, had it gone through all the necessary steps. Thank you.
Very good. One last time. Any member of the public wish to approach the podium and ask a question? Going once? Very good. At this point, then, all those are in the meeting.
Do we have a capital?
Oh.
Is this not also capital hearing as well? No? Or is that incorporated into?
It was incorporated in. I believe, yeah.
All right, if you, if you believe we're done, okay. Thank you.
All set? Ms. Harnoy, okay. Mr. Manager?
Well, I, my only question was whether or not you had to have a motion to close your public hearing prior to adjournment.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor? Very good. We're adjourned.